All right. I'd like to welcome everyone to the 2020 Owen County Commissioner Candidate Debate, sponsored by Spencer Pride. My name is Jonathan Ballish. I am not going to be on camera this evening, thankfully. I am the president of Spencer Pride. Spencer Pride is a local not-for-profit organization focused on making Indiana a more welcoming place for all people. We are a nonpartisan organization that, in addition to our focus on LGBTQ people and issues, does also encourage citizens to educate themselves about important issues and to exercise their right to vote. Today, we are broadcasting live from the Spencer Pride Community Center in Spencer, Indiana. The office of the county commissioner is an important one for our community. There are three members who serve on the Board of Commissioners. This year, two of those three positions are on the ballot, District Two and District Three. There are two candidates competing for each of those districts, one from the Democratic Party and one from the Republican Party. In order to help voters of Owen County become better informed prior to the 2020 general election, we've coordinated two events this year with Commissioner candidates. First, we held a candidate forum back in the spring prior to the primary election. We saw fairly good bipartisan participation and many viewers did tune in. Tonight's the second of our 2020 candidate events, intended as a debate among the candidates from each of the districts. I'm excited that three out of the four candidates responded to our invitations and are participating in some way. Two of our candidates are participating in person. Jared Blubow, Democratic candidate from District Three, and Mike Swafford, Democratic candidate from District Two. Robert "Bob" Curry, Republican candidate from District Two, had another obligation this evening and could not attend in person. However, submitted written responses to this evening's questions. In fairness, the questions were provided to all the candidates in advance of the debate to allow them to adequately prepare their responses. The other candidate, the Republican from District Three, did not respond at all to our invitation to join us this evening. Welcome, gentlemen. I anticipate this evening we'll have some healthy and respectful dialogue on some important county issues. So we're going to cover 10 different topics in the next 90 minutes. If we cover all 10, then we'll wrap up. If that means we're early, we're early. And if we are otherwise not done talking at 7:30, we're going to cut it off out of respect of your time and the time of our audience. So I'm going to introduce a topic and then I'm going to ask one or more questions in each area. I'm going to rotate who I start each question with, just out of fairness. And I'm going to include the responses from Mr. Curry, and I will read them aloud, word for word. You're welcome to interact with one another, but I would ask if you do so to at least let the individual first give their general response so they have the opportunity to express their opinion. And then if you want to engage with them, you're welcome to do that. Ready? All right. "The Board of Commissioners is currently considering the passage of an ordinance prohibiting the accumulation of inoperable vehicles and junk upon private property, which has been met by resistance by some individuals, including Commissioner Williamson, who feel that the existing junk ordinance adequately addresses the issue. If passed, the new ordinance would allow the Owen County Sheriff's Department to issue citations with financial penalties for county residents that do not comply." I'm going to first ask you, Jared. What's your position on the proposed new ordinance regarding those inoperable vehicles and junk on private property?
So the first thing here is whenever you're issuing an ordinance, you're issuing it on the law. I mean, making rules, and rules do kind of restrict freedom. So I think it's great for towns to be able to have, have a rule like this in place, neighborhoods. But as far as, as an overall county, I can't, can't support the fact that you're kind of, you're kind of taking people's freedoms. And we don't want to do that. So I don't always, if I ever pass a ordinance, I'll take a long, hard look at it and see if something we really, really need.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I respect what Jared said. I kind of, I don't know, I disagree a little bit with that. I know, you know, law enforcement was, was my thing that I did for years. And I patrol this county a lot, so I see a lot of things that are out there. I do respect the fact that people may want to collect. We had people out western part of the county there that, you know, collected old cars, they sold cars, they rebuilt cars and they, and, you know, they were, they restored them. So they use those parts and things to do that way. So I respect those things, I respect businesses that do those things. But I also, you know, understand we have, you know, people who have junk cars, they store dog food, they store a lot of things in those. And we recently had an event down around the Freedom Area where there was, I mean, there was thousands of ruins that the county ended up having to put bill on to destroy and clean that, clean that place up. So there's pros and cons to a lot of it. And I understand, you know, when Jared's talking about restricting people's freedoms, I understand that and I respect that. And I would take everybody's input into consideration before I pass any of those things. I know, you know, I heard the, heard Jim, our county attorney, read the ordinance up there the other evening. And some of the things you need to take into consideration, you know, Sheriff's Department, you know, they, they have to be the ones that's going to enforce the ordinance. So do they have people to do that? Are they going to enforce those ordinances? I know a lot of times when we have county ordinances, we have them, but we never enforce them. And honestly, they really don't, the deputies have, I won't say data fish to try. So do we hire someone part-time as a special deputy that would go around and do those things? I mean, as far as the junk ordinance is concerned, would they be the ones to go around and cite people for these things? And even if that, I mean, they pay a fine and they're going to be responsible cleaning that up. And if they don't clean it up, then the county has to go to the court. They have to get an order to go and clean that up. And who's going to foot the bill for that? The county's going to have to foot the bill for that, or you're going to have to find someone, you know, that's willing to go out and collect these things, whether it's old trailers or old cars or whatever the situation is. And maybe they'll do that for that scrap price. But there's a lot of questions that I had concerning that ordinance. It's, I don't know, there's, there's things that could be done to it. I think there's ways to make it work and, but as written, I think it, it's one of those things that we need to, to look at and maybe readdress. I don't know whether Sheriff Hobbs was consulted or not about, you know, the situation that I saw, I mean, or, or felt as far as even the enforcement of, we can write laws, but can we enforce them? You know, do we have that ability or the, or the resources to do that with? So that's where I stand on it. I'm kind of, kind of okay with some of it, some of them not, but I think we can tweak that and make it work for us.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Curry's response was, "I'd like to know if the existing law is being adequately enforced before considering a new law. If the law means one, two, three, four, five junk cars, et cetera, there would need to be a limit set on the number of allowable cars, trucks, mobile homes, and like ISORS."
Yeah, in response to Mr. Curry, as far as the original ordinance, the current ordinance, there's nothing in that ordinance that allows enforcement. There's no way you can, you can go out here and find someone or write them a citation. It would, in order to actually do that, you'd probably have to go into the court and do it civilly. You know, if you made notice on them to say, hey, you're violation of this ordinance, there's, there's nothing for me to cite them in a court to make the courts take action against them. You'd probably have to go in and do it civilly, in civil court. So, so the answer to that question is no, it's not being enforced. That was raised at the last Commissioner's meeting when this ordinance was made.
But that's because you're saying it essentially can't be. They didn't, they didn't build any teeth into it. Got it.
There's no teeth into it for where the Sheriff's Department can actually go out and do that. I think if they did do it, they'd have to go through our county attorney to, to say a letter to them, giving them notice that they're in violation. And then, and then they would have to go through the court process if they didn't.
Okay. Anything else on that topic? All right. "For quite some time, and particularly over the last 18 months, many Owen County citizens have lost competence in leadership of our existing county commissioners. While some of it has to do with specific policies, many of the concerns are related to the lack of transparency, the approach to decision-making, and the way that citizens have been treated by the commissioners." I'm first going to go to you, Mike. What would you bring to the office of the commissioner that would work to restore citizen confidence, excuse me, citizen competence and county leadership?
Well, you know, that's something that I think comes in time. I just can't walk through the door and people's wanting to trust me, you know? But, but for years, like I said, I've worked in, in law enforcement for years. I've worked around people for years. I've solved a lot of people's problems, or I hope, hope I have. I've added to those, or might not add to the problems, but they'd be added to the way they've solved them. And I hope, hope that I've done that. And I think that I can do that as a commissioner, but there's a lot of, a lot of issues out there. And I think just by, by the way I work, people will hopefully, hopefully see that I'm out there to try to, to help them, not, not work against them, but work with them. And to give people back their voice, let them, let them speak at the meetings. I know, I think probably one of the big concerns, and this is another, I think, one of your questions, but one of the, one of the big concerns is, is time. Those meetings last three and four hours. And if, you know, people are allowed to go and go and go, well, it's going to take more and more time. But I still think that's important. And, and as far as the transparency, you know, I think, you know, people can, people can handle, you know, the truth more than they can lie. And sometimes, you know, even, even silence is a lie. When you know what, what you're doing, when you know what's happening, and you fail to, to tell that to people, well, then that, that's a lie. So, so I think, you know, being more open to people and allowing people to speak at these meetings and, and just showing true leadership and showing that as you're there to help instead of work against them, I think over time, people will start to see that. And that can bring back that trust, you know, in our office.
Okay. So I'm going to go to Mr. Curry's response, and then I will let Jared speak. So Mr. Curry said to that question, which as a reminder was, "What do you bring to the office of Commissioner that would work to restore citizen confidence in county leadership?" I wrote the question and I still can't say it. He said, "I'm an older person now. I stop, listen, and think before sharing my opinion. I'll bring wisdom, expertise, transparency, and leadership to the office, along with an openness to listening to all citizen concerns." All right, Jared, I'm going to go over to you. "What would you bring to the office of Commissioner that would work to restore citizen competence and county leadership?"
So the first thing I would do is show your face everywhere. Every town board meeting, every county council meeting, school board meeting, anywhere you can be to show your support in the community. Show people you care and everyone put in the work. The other part of that for me would be, I want to use social media as a tool to, to connect to people. It's going to take a lot of my time from this and I give it back to the community. I'm going to try to do deep things with it, stuff that gets the community excited and stuff that, that makes people trust. So we build that, bring it back.
All right.
I'll also add something else if I can.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, it's important to be more hands-on. I think what we've got going on right now in Commissioner's office, from what I gather from, from employees, is that they're not hands-on, not micromanaging, but being hands-on, visiting with each one of these departments, talking with the people that run them, and not just run them, but people who's actually out here doing the work. Because they, they have input as well. And I think when you start to do those things and, and learn about these different departments, find out what we're doing right, find out what we're doing wrong, how we can improve, those are the things that also help, help to build, build the trust. And so I think that, that's something that I really want to plan to do.
Okay. So continuing on the topic, and you kind of alluded to it a little bit earlier, but just to be really clear, "Do you support the efforts of the current Board of Commissioners to limit citizen participation during the routine public meetings?"
No, and I, and I, and I will emphasize, I mean, you can let people go too long. And, and, you know, I, I do believe in allowing people to speak and allow them to make their points. And when they've done that, then we'll move on. But I think we need to do that. And I know that right now you have an agenda and people, and you have to be on that agenda. But there's things that come up in these meetings and people have something to say. And, you know, and to say, no, you can't, you can't speak on this. Well, I think that's, that's wrong. So, so no, I think we need to allow that back into those, into those meetings and let people have, have their input.
Yeah. Mr. Curry said, "No, the public should have a right to speak. The commissioners are tasked with completing county business and employee oversight first. However, all citizens should be heard and given adequate time to speak." Jared, your thoughts on this one?
Yeah. So I was actually, I was raised around a couple of former commissioners. And a saying I always learned was, "Bring it to a meeting." So if you have a concern about anything, you know, always, always come to me. Please, please bring it to me while you speak. You're collecting a paycheck in this position, so if we're there for five hours, if they're 10 hours, that's, it is what it is. We're there for the people, for their concerns. Please bring it to a meeting.
All right. And one more question on this topic. Again, the topic being current Owen County Board of Commissioners. So the last question here is, "If you feel that the current Board of Commissioners have been good leaders for Owen County, love to hear your thoughts on why." Mike?
Well, it's a tough job. And, you know, anytime you, you do that, you put a big bullseye on your back. And higher up, I always said higher up, the, you know, the ladder you go, the bigger your bullseye gets. So, so, but, but you have to learn to be a little thick-skinned and think some things, or you shouldn't be in those positions. Don't always agree with their tactics on the way they do things. I'll say even the events ordinance, the night that they passed that, it was, I think we were at a level orange in this county for a winter, winter storm watch. So that restricted a lot of people from coming to that, that meeting and voicing their opinion. That, that was certainly done on purpose and was wrong. So, so no, I don't always agree with the way they do things. And so, you know, can't say they've always done everything wrong. And I can't say they've always done everything right. And we're, and we're not going to get everything right. But those things like that is definitely wrong and should never happen.
Mr. Curry said, "I feel like much needs to change, which is why I have chosen to run for county commissioner. As an elected official, we need to bring the, we, the people back to the forefront of county government. I pledge to listen and work for the citizens of Owen County." Jared?
Yeah. I'm not saying, I'm not saying no here. We've had a lot, a lot of negative news stories. I've heard a lot of stories from county employees. And obviously, they're probably many commissioners that have done some good things. But overall, a lot, a lot of negative news stories. You have to answer your phone, they can always be there. And be transparent, I mean, to, you know, go to work with county council, town council, you have to get out there and, and show your face. I don't think it's personally, it is a tough job. I'm sure they've done some good things, but as an overall job, I'm going to say.
Okay. All right. Speaking of working with some of the departments, Owen County Sheriff Sam Hobbs has expressed many concerns about the local jail, describing the challenges the department faces when trying to keep it maintained. The jail was built 34 years ago and intended to last about 20 years, yet it's still operating today. The county is considering levying a 0.2% increase to the local income tax in order to fund a $250,000 study of the current jail. The county council has already authorized a Terre Haute-based construction services company to complete the study. So first, and I'm going to read Mr. Curry's response initially, just for keeping the rotation moving along here. The first question is, "Do you support the county council's decision to authorize a jail study?" And Mr. Curry said, "Yes, the jail is outdated and needs to be replaced, and this is a good first step in the process." So now I'm going to move on to you, Jared. "Do you support the county council's decision to authorize a jail study?"
Yeah, so a few numbers here that we're looking at. We've seen a few counties around us get sued, and it's a very bad thing. So let's say, we use, for example, Beagle County got sued for $80 million from the federal government. And when you hear that number, where does that number come from? When your county gets sued, that raises your taxes, that comes out of your pocket. That's everybody. So you don't want that to happen. I absolutely do not want that to happen. We've already filed one audit at the jail, and it is in bad shape, and it's unsafe for the employees there. Another number, every year, it goes, it goes up 7% in cost over the past four years. It's up to 7% cost. Obviously, we got to be a little conservative because of COVID and that, and our money's going to cost. But we have to get this, we have to, for everybody's safety.
Okay. Mike?
Right. But I think the $250,000 figure is, is probably an elevated figure. It may not actually be that much. The 2% tax that they're trying to pass, that's probably going to be now, in the end, it'll probably go up to 3%. But anyway, the, the plan, it's mandated by law to do this, to study. It's not something that they're just coming up with. It is, it is mandated by law to do that. So anyway, that's why they're doing that. So I do support that. The jail is old. It's, it was probably, in all honesty, outdated the day they moved into back 30 years ago. It was a borrowed plant. It wasn't even one that they came up with themselves. They bought that plan or, or was given that plan from another, from another county. So anyway, it was, it was outdated back then. It's too small as far as the administrative part of it and things like that go. But now we've moved out of that and went into the Old EMS for the administrative part of it, which will, will help with that. But the feasibility study, it's going to tell us which direction we go in. Whether we build a new jail, add on to it, which I don't really think is a grand idea, since that one's, we can't use it anyway. I mean, it's been, already been said that it should be leveled, made parking lot out of it. So, so we need to do that. We need to go through that, that jail study. But, you know, I think a lot of that, I mean, the way we've always operated on things like this, we, we scurry. And we never, we never have a plan, you know? And if we, if we had planned, I mean, 30 years ago, had we planned to replace this jail 30 years later, we may have had that $250,000 setting in an account somewhere where we could have used that to do this study with. We wouldn't have to raise those taxes right now. So, you know, if, if our commissioners work with the council the way they should, which they don't, you know, they can come up with a strategic plan, they can put money into funds like that, and, you know, a building fund. I mean, we have a building fund, that they could maybe do things to, to create money for that fund. And when things like this come up, or we have, we have emergencies in that jail where they need to have things fixed, the cell doors, the lock snowboard, you know, the sewer gas that comes up out of the pipes, you know, things like that. When, you know, when those things are needed, well, we would have, have the money to maybe fix that instead of, you know, raising people's taxes all the time. But right now, that's really our only option.
And that is an exact transition to my next question, which I probably should have just combined into one. So apologies for being redundant, but, so at least the three of you participating are all in agreement that the jail study is the right direction. More specifically, the next question, and you may have already addressed this, but I'm just going to read it because I haven't addressed Mr. Curry's position yet, but do you support increasing the local income pa, income tax to pay for that jail study? And Mr. Curry's response was, "Yes, the particular tax would be driven by the total cost of the project and would be for a set number of years." Jared, you want to just?
Yeah. So what's going to happen is either we pay this tax, it's coming, or we're going to have a heavier tax coming because we're going to get a lawsuit. We don't want that. So he said he can probably build this jail for 12 to 18 million dollars. And if you're in the same boat as Beagle County getting sued for 80 million, then how much are you going to pay out of our own pockets?
And that doesn't count the jail?
Yeah. If you don't get a jail out of this, so let's do it, let's get over with.
Okay. Mike?
Right. I say, again, I think the, the income tax is the only way that we're going, we're going to do that. You're talking a lot of several millions of dollars there. There's probably some legal issues involved in that as far as county goes and collecting bonds, those types of things. We may end up facing some litigation with that as well. My understanding is some of that, if it goes over certain amounts of dollars, it may have to go on maybe a referendum. And those things have to be looked at as well. So you, you know, we may get challenged on those things. And we'll face those as we, as we, as we go, I guess. But I will, I'm going to plug Anita Morgan for our council. And she's got a PhD, she works over at Kelly. She teaches there and she teaches, she teaches strategic planning. So she would be a very good person to be in our, in our council that would actually help us develop that type of plan.
All right. "Until a decision is made about what to do about the jail, do you feel there's any additional actions that can be taken to address the sheriff's concerns about the jail? If so, can you explain?" Mr. Curry said, "The sheriff and Indiana Department of Corrections will make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners for consideration and input, and any actions that need to be taken will be done at that time." Jared?
Yeah. So the sheriff would pre-vote as far as what needs to be done safety-wise at that moment, what we can be about without until a new jail. I'm sure he's, he definitely wants to work everybody on that. So if there's any major safety concerns before, they have to get done. Obviously, we don't want anybody at risk to get hurt. So it's just one of those things we take day by day until a new jail is built. Hopefully, it's a little cheaper than, than, thanks to everything, we'll see.
Right. I mean, yeah, they do have jail inspections and the jail inspector comes, he does make recommendations. There's actually, by law, they don't have to do anything. If he recommends, you know, that they fix locks on the, on the, on the cells, for instance, I mean, there's two layers there. So anyway, if he, if he makes those recommendations, he's really not obligated to fix those by law. He could be sued, you know, by inmates or somebody for those types of things. But, so they are just recommendations. And, but we do need to make sure that that jail's safe for those people that, that work there and for the inmates as well, not just, not just the people that work there. We need to make sure that everybody is safe that's in that jail. So if there's issues there that are safety issues, we need, we need to make sure that we, we get that taken care of until we can get the new jail built, whatever our plan is going to be.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the jail? That you want to talk about? All right. "In 2020, the Owen County Board of Commissioners authorized county ordinances to be put online to allow for easy access by citizens. If elected to the Board of Commissioners, do you support any further improvements to ensure better transparency and access to the commissioner's work? And if so, in what ways?" Jared?
Yeah. So we know this is a good thing. Obviously, we want everybody to know what's going on, be current. And that's something I'll definitely do with the social media and make sure I get the word out there as much as possible so everybody knows what's going on in our community, that with any updates to local ordinances. Anything else we might do at that time?
Yeah. Mike?
Yeah, I, I know, I know our website right now, our county website. If you go to that, you'll see minutes of meetings and things, but it says that it's big one. And so if they're making it easier for us to find these ordinances, I haven't, I haven't found that avenue yet. I'm, 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 I'm an older guy, but I'm not too computer literate. So I can find my way around the computer, but I really haven't found that way yet. So evidently, it's not that easy to find if you're there at all. So we do need those ordinances online. We do need to be transparent. I think, I think even virtual meetings where we have that access. We did at one time till our IT guy was, was, we were replaced with housework people. So we had that, I think, at one time. I don't know, I'm not too savvy in that, where I know how to set that up. But I do know that it's available and I know there's people out there that can do it. So I would like to have those meetings virtual as well, so people can tune in and see those and see what's going on. Social media is a really good way of communicating with people now these two. So we can do that, get things online, get things through social media where people know what we're doing. And maybe they, you know, they can, they can have input as well that way. Some people like doing that. I know the County Highway has a, has a page, and I really, really appreciate the information that they put out there now. I think that's- I think that really helps. You'll see, you'll see comments on there, good and bad, you know? My road's not getting fixed, how come there's it? You know, those types of things and you're gonna see that. But I see the, the response that they give back and I really appreciate that we put you on the list. We've made a ticket on that. And I know the last meeting Clark Road was mentioned and I saw on their website where they went out, they patched that road layout. And it goes great. Milton, I think, has done a good job and he's, he said, we'll get out and we'll get that taken care of. And, and they're doing that. So, so, but through that social media, you know, as a good, it's just a good way to, to communicate with people now and, uh, and through the, the virtual meetings. I think we can do that. We can make things a little better.
Okay. All right. Mr. Curry said, um, he does support improvements as the question indicates to ensure better transparency and access to the commissioner's actions and decisions as permitted by state and county law. All right, next topic. Recently, Owen County Commissioners passed an ordinance requiring county employees working at the courthouse to wear a face mask when interacting with the public. The same ordinance makes face coverings strongly encouraged but not required during public meetings. Do you support the ordinance as currently written? And please explain why. Mike, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I've, I've not read the ordinance other than just what you explained to me. I know, I know we're at level five for this state right now. Governor has extended the, the face mask, uh, rule. So, I mean, I, you go around town and see people really not abiding by that. Even, even in our last, uh, meeting there at Fairgrounds, people, candidates not abiding by that. So I think with, I think it's, it's face masks, social distancing, that's the, that's the recommendation now. If you're in bars, you need to be seated, can't be up milling around. So I think, I think that's where we really, really need to be. Uh, as far as the, uh, employees interacting with people and the base mask part of it, that's, that's fine. Uh, but the meetings, I think, uh, we go to the meetings, uh, we're all stretched together. Some people are wearing face masks and I, and I really don't care what's your, what's your opinion of the face masks are. I know we're socially distancing in here, so, so we're not, uh, you know, too at risk here. Maybe we are, but not as. And I think as long as we, we do those things, we keep the social distancing, but I think with certainty in these meetings, people need to be wearing a mask now. And I don't care, you know, you can say, well, it's, it's a bunch of bologna, I don't care. But, uh, we need to respect people. If you, if people want to wear their face mask, the, everybody should be wearing those face masks until we get through this thing.
Yeah. Before I read Mr. Curry's, I just want to say for those at home who may not know this, um, there is no one else here at the community center. So when he says we're socially distanced, we are literally the only three people in the center at this time. So we're very socially distanced, um, here. All right, uh, Mr. Curry's response to the question about, um, supporting that ordinance is, um, yes, he does support it, but when the state of Indiana no longer requires the additional health precaution, we as a county should also not mandate the wearing of face coverings.
Now, may I say something to that?
Yes.
He showed up down at the fairgrounds without a, a mask and never wore one the whole time. So I don't think he really does support that.
Okay, good information. Jared, do you support it?
Yeah, so our job here, um, in these positions are lead by example. You know, every day, obviously, um, wearing a mask keeps us safer throughout this whole process. So we have to do it. There's a meeting or, you know, um, we gotta lead by example and follow the rules. So, um, I think even at the meetings, we should be, should be masked, which I am, I don't go to.
Okay. All right, back over to you, Mike. Still on the same topic. Do you think there are additional measures that the Board of Commissioners should be taking to address the current pandemic?
Well, you know, I, I don't know exactly what they would be other than, you know, to keep in communications with our health department and with our health officer. And, uh, and taking a look at where we're at in our county, I think we're at one hundred and seventy. Hundred and seventy too many, two deaths, two deaths too many. So, you know, I think we look at our situation and you look at Marion County, for instance, what, there were, wow, thousands of cages, something like that. We're only sixty miles away from, from them. People come here all the time, come here all over, you know, through the summer to, to visit at our parks and recreate here. So, so, but to keep, you know, I think things in perspective, you know, we, we can. If we, if we see our numbers go up, we can certainly mandate through ordinances, uh, what we need to do. But I think we need to, to keep in contact with our health department and our health officer and, and, and really go by, go by those things and not, not maybe, not by, by what a politician type me or, or whoever else might, might say. So, so yeah, there are things that we can do, uh, to, to mandate different things, uh, to go above and beyond what even the state calls for if that's so, if, if we have to. But I, I still believe that, that we need to be following at least what our, our state mandates are.
Okay. Mr. Curry said, um, in that question, so again, the question is, do you feel there are additional measures that the Board of Commissioners should be taking to address the current pandemic? Um, his response was no, the health department and the Owen County Health Officer are doing a great job for the county. As always, we need to be proactive and not reactive. Jared, any additional measures we should be taking?
Right now, we're sitting at a hundred and sixty mile woods in there. Uh, I was looking at the counties around us, we're actually doing better than a lot of our neighbors. Honestly, our health department is, is doing a good job right now. Uh, if those numbers were to spike that immediately, what's, what's, what we could do, what we do from there, uh, to, to change that pattern, uh, at the moment. Obviously, we have the clinic here that's open, uh, throughout the week. If anybody feels like they have symptoms, um, we, you know, that's all government lines. Please stop by there.
Okay. All right. According to the information shared by probation department director Donna McElroy at a Board of Commissioners meeting, Owen County has experienced a seventy-one percent increase in felony arrests over the last two years. In July twenty twenty, the Commissioners authorized Director McElroy to hire an additional employee to help monitor individuals on probation. Uh, first, we're gonna go to Mr. Curry's response, but the question is, do you support the Commissioner's decision to authorize the hiring of an additional employee? Please explain. Direct, uh, sorry. Uh, Mr. Curry's response was Director McElroy is a very wise and caring person. She would not ask for that additional employee if the individual were not needed. The department is staffed by county-funded and state-funded physicians. All right. Um, Jared?
Yeah, so a big part of our future, you're gonna see here, I'm even building a new jail, is mental health. Um, it's a big deal in this country right now. It's gonna be a deal going forward. It's hard to get rid of probation department. We gotta do everything we can, um, to rebuild these people who make mistakes and have them be productive members of society. It doesn't do us any good to just, just keep throwing them back in there, you know? We, we have to build people up and get them back out there. So yeah, obviously a little bit more and, uh, it sounds like almost talking to them anymore than that. Uh, so it's something that's gonna be, be in the future, especially with the building of this jail, mental health, um, and, yeah, probation.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I've, I've known Donna McElroy for, for many, many years, uh, back when she first came here as a probation officer. So, so I do, I, I value her opinions, I value, you know, everything she, she really does and worked. So I think they have, I don't know, seven or eight maybe people over there that are probation officers right now. Hope I didn't miss, uh, speak with that. But I think that's, I think that's, but, um, I would think that if she asked for that help, she, she really needed that help. I mean, it's really, it's a judicial thing. I mean, people get arrested, they go to court, they, you know, they, they get sentenced, they get put on probation. You know, it's supervised probation or it's unsupervised probation. I would assume, and I must say, seventy-one percent rise in felony arrests are probably a lot of drug-related arrests. And, and Jared, uh, you know, he, he speaks, uh, alluded to the, the mental health and things like that. And, and, and the drugs do cause that. I mean, they, they cause a lot of psychosis. So there are things like that, but I do believe that, you know, our court systems and we can, we can, as a commissioner, I'm kinda, kinda, you know, don't have a whole lot of pull with what our judges are going to do with people. But I think meeting with those judges and speaking with them and talking with them about these, about these issues, uh, maybe we can, maybe look at getting these people into rehab centers. And the more, the more they can get in, you know, and, and again, people that go to rehab centers, they, they have to want to be there, you know? And just because you're court ordered there, that's, you know, it's probably not gonna work, to be honest with you. They're gonna have to want to be there. So it's gonna be somebody that really wants to go. And, and those are the type of people that we can get in, get in, get the help to and get them off of probation as, as quickly as we can. And I don't know how our, our drug court is working here or anything. Hopefully that's, that's working okay or, or better. I know we, we started that at one time. So, so hopefully we can, we can work through that. But it's, it's gonna be a, it's just a, a big issue and I don't know exactly other, you know, how the commissioners can actually handle that. I don't know what we can actually do to, to make that, to make that situation any better.
Okay. So again, uh, my questions are a little redundant here, um, because you guys are being so thorough the first time around, but, um, technically I had a follow-up question here. I want to make sure I give Mr. Curry's response, but that was, do you feel the Commissioners should do more to address this topic? His response, and I think it, um, echoes a little bit of what you're saying as well, was I feel as though this issue is more directly related to court system and probation department and would require input from Judge Quillen, Judge Hanlon, and the Director. So anything else, Jared, that you would add to what you've already said?
We definitely have to work with, uh, the probation department, everybody here in the building on new jail to make sure we have the adequate amount of, uh, need to, to, to.
And anything else, Mike? You were pretty thorough the first time, so, okay, great. All right, moving on to the next topic. Brought up a couple of times already here. In twenty nineteen, special events became a major topic at the Board of Commissioners meetings due to the proposed and ultimately approved changes to the special events ordinance. While the ordinance that was approved was a watered-down version of what was originally proposed, it eliminated access to the courthouse property during special events and added a variety of new costs and restrictions. So, um, I'm first gonna start with you, Jared, but I'm gonna combine a couple of questions here, uh, trying to be thoughtful. So do you feel that special events in downtown add value to the community? And do you feel that citizens, um, should be able to use the courthouse grounds, the restroom, the grounds themselves?
So this is actually the whole reason why I got involved in this, uh, by Ran for Office here. I grew up here, I was a little kid, I wanted to invest in the courthouse and all the courthouse grounds there, downtown events. And I've got memories there, um, as everybody, as everyone else does. They're very important. Uh, I remember, it wasn't about fifteen, twenty years ago, this downtown was just, uh, barren. It was, uh, empty. And this came along a while. I've talked to a lot of these shop owners and stuff about how much money they've lost because of losing these downtown events and losing all these, all this amount. They got, um, this, this ordinance really, really, to be honest with you, needs to go away. It's not helping anybody. Still, I'm, still not sure what they're looking for when they did it. But it'll be a, to have this out there on the courthouse lawn, celebrate our downtown heritage.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I, I agree with Jared. I mean, I think we need to, to bring those back as, as we can. I hope we get through this pandemic, maybe, hopefully we can start doing some of these things again, uh, in twenty twenty-one. Courthouse lawn and the courthouse and, you know, um, I'll quote Mark Rogers and say it's the people's courthouse. And, uh, they have a right to that courthouse just as well, you know, as anyone. So it's not just business hours. If we have an event and we need to open that courthouse up for people to use that restroom and things, I think that's, that's the right thing to do. You know, I think, you know, our events, it, it brings people together. You know, it's not just whether it's the apple butter festival or the, you know, the, the, or, or anything, any event that we have here. It just brings, brings everyone, brings everyone together and it's a, it's a community thing. So, uh, and it's good for our downtown businesses. I think a lot of them have lost a lot of revenue because of that. And I'd like to work with, uh, the Lions Club and bring that apple butter festival back up here to the, to the courthouse square. I think a lot of people have talked about that and said it's kind of lost some of its, whatever, uh, uh, by being down there at the fairgrounds. And I think maybe even the fair boards up the ante on their, on their fees and stuff that may, may actually cause them to try to, to look or hopefully not do away with it, but to, to bring it back up here. But I know the application is a hundred, it's a hundred dollars, it's non-refundable. And then they have a, a $250, it's a cash deposit. And it is, uh, refundable. And there's, there's things in that ordinance. I think the fines, uh, let me write this, yeah, fines can be two hundred, twenty-five hundred per incident, per day. I don't know of any traffic ticket that would cost you that. I don't, I don't disagree with, with a fine if somebody's violating that, uh, that ordinance, but I don't know that it needs to be two hundred dollars. And I don't need, think that it needs to go up to tw- to twenty-five hundred dollars, you know? But, uh, if it gets to the point where, where somebody, you know, is in violation of that and needs to be signed with them, that's not, I don't have a problem with that. I've booked tickets to people all my life. But I've also taken some of them back and I've also given people options, you know? We can do it this way or we can do it that way. So if you want to get compliance, well, that's fine. It all goes back to, you know, who's going to enforce that? You know, uh, are deputies, do the deputies have that time to do that? You know? Maybe they will, maybe they won't. It's like, it's like any other ordinance that we have, they seem not to, to get enforced very well. But anyway, um, and all of it is subject to the Commissioners, whether they want to charge you for that, uh, application fee or not, they can waive all of it. So it makes me think, you know, if you can waive something, what's the point of having? So I don't know. There's, there's things in that that, 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 that need to be changed. And we need to have an ordinance, but I don't know that we need to have it written in the way that we do.
Okay. Mr. Curry's response, uh, to the question, do you feel that special events add value to the community? He said, yes, I do think they add value to the community. To the question, um, should county stations be able to utilize courthouse grounds, including the lawn and restrooms for public events? His response was the courthouse grounds have traditionally been accessible to all citizens. However, security concerns have limited the ability to access the courthouse and interior restrooms after county business hours. A public restroom is currently under construction south of the courthouse, which should resolve the need to access the interior of the courthouse after hours. Moving on to the same topic, um, so we got a little bit into it already, but, um, I think you clearly stated, Jared, your answer to this first question, but I'm just gonna group these last two together on this topic and just say, can you just clearly say you either do or don't support the special events ordinance that was passed in December twenty nineteen? And if you support making changes to it, how do you envision going about making those changes? And it, and, and more specific there to, um, like the process? Like how would you go about undoing or, or amending?
I can understand doing maybe a walk through before and a small security deposit. But as far as I'm concerned personally, the ordinance is go in general, uh, throw the trash can.
There was, uh, some teeth to the prior existing ordinance as well, just to kind of point out for educational purposes. So if we're just looking for an ability to hold someone accountable, that technically existed, it wasn't being enforced. But, um, all right, Mike, your thoughts on, again, you've already alluded to this as well, but, uh, do you, do you support the ordinance as it was approved? And how would you go about wanting to make change to it if you were?
Yeah, I, I really don't, I don't support it, uh, as far as the way it was approved. I don't support it in the manner that it was approved. And I think, uh, you know, like I said, there's, there's changes that I think that we need to make. But what I would like to do is, is to, to get people together. Maybe you can even form a committee. There's people that, that would probably support that ordinance probation. I wouldn't mind having some of those people. And you have difference of opinions. You have people that can meet together and can talk and sort this thing out and they come up with a, a working ordinance that's going to, to work for everyone. And, and I think we can do that, hopefully. I don't know that the people who've actually supported that as was, I don't know if they would even come to the table and, and, and speak about, to be honest with you, they might. But I would certainly welcome, welcome them to do that and welcome anyone to do that. But I would certainly welcome, welcome them to do that and welcome anyone to do that. And we can have public hearings on that again, and we can talk about it some more. But I do think getting together, a group of people together, I don't care whether it's three or four or five, and have Commissioner, I could do it myself, I would invite Gary Burton, since he signed off on that, I would invite Commissioner Burton to sit down in that committee as well. And I'm certain he could explain why he felt that was good to sign off on. And we could listen to those opinions in that manner, and we could come up with a solution that would fit everybody.
All right, thank you. Mr. Curry's response was, you know, to the question, do you support the special events ordinance as approved by the Commissioners? He said that he had not fully read the special events ordinance, but will fully review it and all ordinances passed in the last four years if elected. And then specifically about if you do support making changes, how would you go about it? He added, as stated above, I pledge to review this and all ordinances passed in the last four years. I'm not approaching this position with a personal agenda. Rather, I plan to listen to all citizen concerns and take any action needed for the betterment of Owen County. Anything else on special events before we move on? All right. Road and bridge maintenance is a topic frequently brought up during Commissioner meetings. Do you feel that the Commissioners could be doing more to address the maintenance of county roads and bridges? And if so, what? Mike, can you start us with this one?
Again, we just have so much money to work with, you know? I mean, that's always the answer. You know, we get money through our fuel tax, we get money through community crossroads grants. And, but, you know, those, those are the ways, I mean, those are the things, how we get our money to do road maintenance and with. So, and the community crossroad grant, I think my understanding of that is, is that it's only for, for new paves. Or, I'm sorry, it's for repaves, not new pays, but, but repaves, where a road has already been paved and they go back and redo that. So, something new really doesn't, doesn't cover that. So, so we only have, we have limited, it's our gas tax, our fuel tax, that's another way that we get money back to do, to do roads with as well. And they'll, they'll, people say, well, you got to buy your gas here in town, you know, that's how we are in our county, that's how we get, and that's not true. Ever, anywhere you get by gas, well, that tax comes back, some of it comes back to our counties, and that's done through the state. So, anyway, that's, those are the three ways we get, we get money to do that with. I think we need to, I don't know, I don't know what we could do more. I know Greg Milton, I think, their recruiting's doing a pretty good job, a much better job than what, what was being done in the past to get things done. Again, planning, I think, is a, is a good way of doing that, whether it be, you know, cutting the weeds or passing holes. And we have to, we have to get a certain timeframes and plans, ditching, those types of things. I think, you know, ditching is a, I don't know, I'm not a road guy, but I think ditching's very important to keep those roads, you know, surface or intact where they're not deteriorating. Because you get a lot of water and stuff running over those, and without the ditches and without the drainage, you just have problems. And I understand we can't be everywhere at once, and we can't do everything at once, that's 712 miles of county road, and it's, it's a lot. So, we can do what we can do, and we'll, we'll try to do the best we can do, and we'll listen to people. And I think, like Jared talked about, through social media and things like that, we can, we can pinpoint problems that we have. Plans always change. I mean, I know they have a road plan for paving, but if something comes up, it needs to, needs to change. But I do think that we need to keep our main fair repairs, you know, in good, good shape. A lot of the ambulants, a lot of the, you know, our police departments, they all travel over. Going out paving our housing condition, like Mr. Brothers did six months after he was elected, that's not prior.
Okay. All right. Mr. Curry said, did a budget limitations, only so much can be done each year. However, the Commissioners must be proactive and plan for changes and improvements. Jared?
So, this is something I'm actually pretty excited about to work on. You know, as far as grant money goes, you know, definitely want to make sure we get all that, we can get martial law offices out there. We could be good if they're doing, if they're getting everything they can. I think we've seen some progress here in the recent past on roads. We got to be creative here, also COVID, and what was this money from the fuel tax? I know one thing they're doing is they're stockpiling almost all shillings. They have like, what was it, it's a 4,000 pounds of it?
I forget.
It was a lot. So, we, it doesn't last as long as on supply side of it, but we have to get creative and smart with our money. And I'll put a lot of time into that and see what we can do to really stretch it out. That's all.
Okay. All right. Moving on topics then. The 2019 decision by the Owen County Board of Commissioners to back out of the building department agreement with the Town of Spencer has created some challenges for county resources, including the health department. So, I'd like to just put two questions here. One, do you support the Commissioners' decision to part ways with the Town of Spencer and the management of a shared building department? And two, what do you feel should be done to address the current resource constraints? So, I'm going to go ahead and start with Mr. Curry this time and his responses to those questions. So, in regards to whether or not Mr. Curry supports the Commissioners' decision to part ways with the Town of Spencer, he does not. He said, no, I think the Town of Spencer and the Owen County Board of Commissioners should bring the building department back together for the good of all people of Owen County. And to the second question, his response was, the town and county building department should again be combined and resources shared for the betterment of taxpayers. So, Jared, can you?
Yeah, so especially with COVID going on right now, we have to find as many ways as possible to save money. So, this actually did cost us some money by splitting us up. So, we have to, as a, the Commissioner, County Council, Town Council, every, we're on the same team. They all got to work together. Should be easy to do, but, yeah, we definitely need to bring this back together. Anything we can do to save a few dollars, especially right now through the tough times we're getting in the face. Yeah, but I support it back together.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I've known John and Mike and Dean for a long, a long, a long time. So, so working with them, I think it's going to be easy to do that with. I really support going back together. I really, when I read the question, when you sent that to me, I really hadn't, didn't know too much about it. So, I went down and spoke with John and Sheila Reeves about that and got some of their input on that, which I think is, that's the thing to do. And, you know, they, they seemed to think that it would work again, that it needs to be combined. It was done on a 60-40 split deal, which means the permits that are sold, you know, the county gets 60% of that money. The town gets 40% of that money. She thought that was a little high, maybe 80-20 or maybe 70-30, something like that. But when we got out of that, whatever money was, was in that pot, we had to cough that 40% up to the town. Now, they, I think they hired a building inspector, you know, we're getting ready to have a new one come to work. And she hasn't already done that. That person has to be trained so on and so on. So, now you've got, you've got two people. That doesn't, to me, that doesn't really make sense. But working with them and trying to come up with a working figure on that, I think, is what we need to do. I was told that, you know, the town, they don't have that much going on with the building is concerned. So, that was a reason maybe the 60-40 was a little high because they're, they're getting a lot more bankrupt. And it's costing, you know, the county a little bit more that way. Or, so, so I think if we work together and do those things, well, I think that's the way to go. And I even asked, asked Sheila, I said, well, we have to have different ordinances, you know? Can we keep our same ordinances? The town has different ones compared to the county. And she said, no, we can keep the same and, and, you know, and the office is there and people call. We got one place to call and one, one person to deal with versus, oh, now you've got, no, that's here in town, you got to call this number. So, then people think, they start getting the runaround. So, so, no, we need to, we need to enter back into that agreement with them and talk to them and try to negotiate that. So, we're all working, working together. I think that would be the best for everyone concerned.
Okay. All right. All right. Last question. If elected, what would be your first priorities as an Owen County Commissioner and why? Jared, let's start with you.
Yeah, so the main thing for me is going to be getting people to trust the Commissioners again, really, to build, bridge the gap between people and the county government. What can I do to make people, you know, really get back behind us and think we're on the same page? Something I will do is have some of your social media tool, and take some of all this money to develop some position and, and do a COVID challenge for Owen County, just to get back to people and just bring them back together. Really, just anything I can do to make people trust county government again. Bring everybody back together is going to be my number one priority to start off with.
Okay. Mike?
Well, I talked about it earlier, and over my years of service to the state, you know, I think I've worked for, I don't know, maybe four or five different supervisors that were all the way at the, at the top. And each one of those people, when they were appointed those positions, we had meetings and we, and they came and they introduced themselves, and they introduced, you know, what, what their plans was for my department. And, and we talked about those things. So, I think that's probably one of the best things that, that we can do as Commissioners, is to go around to these departments and talk to them, talk to the heads, talk to people, and, and let them know what, what our plans are and listen to what they have as, as input to help us do our jobs. And I think that way, everybody's all pretty much on the same page right from the, from the beginning. We know where each other, where we stand, and, and we know that we're, we're out there to, to help and, and work together. I think that's, that's the main thing that we, we really need to do. I think, I think that works, as with me over the years.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Curry's response to that question. I personally have no special interests. My priority is the betterment of Owen County. I pledge to work for and with the people of Owen County. Working together, we can make Owen County a better place to live, work, and raise a family. Anything else you want to add before I wrap up?
Need your vote when you support. Get out there, get out there. I would just, yeah, yeah, yeah. I would just say, I just thank Spencer Pride for doing this, seeing you. I wish we could have had, had all the candidates here, so we could have, could have had a little bit of a debate, you know? And, and I don't want to take anything away from Mr. Curry and what he said there, but I would rather have somebody here to talk to about that, to see if those really are his words.
All right. It's important that everyone have a plan to vote to ensure that they're able to exercise their civic right to participate in our democracy. If you've not yet registered to vote, you still can. The last day for voter registration in order to participate in the 2020 general election is October 3rd. That is this Saturday. Early voting in Owen County begins next week. There are multiple early voting locations. If you wish to request a mail-in ballot, you must do so by October 22nd. If you choose to get a mail-in ballot, you have to return it in person or via postal mail. Either way, they have to receive it by November 3rd at noon. To register to vote, to request a mail-in ballot, or to find out more about where those early voting locations are, you can visit www.indianaVoters.in.gov. That is www.indianaVoters.in.gov. I was on the site earlier today, it's very easy to use. As a reminder, Election Day is Tuesday, November 3rd. So, I'd like to thank the candidates for participating tonight, and I'd like to thank your viewing audience from the Spencer Pride Community Center. On behalf of our passionate volunteers, I wish everyone a good evening. Thank you.